All right, it's 7:01, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thanks to everyone for being here tonight and for the diligent preparation that goes on for these activities. All right, so we'll go ahead and approve the agenda. Do I have a...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. Okay, did everybody have a chance to look through the minutes? And if so, do you have any changes? If not, do I have a motion? Does anybody have any comments or changes to the minutes?
Any move will you approve the minutes as listed?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. All right. We don't have a consent agenda, we don't have an administration administrative session, so we'll jump right into legislative and... Is it you? I can't tell. So this is Eternal Spring? Okay. Good enough.
All right. So, um, this is probably familiar to you in some way because we did table this discussion and we're getting, and now we're getting back to it. So, if you remember correctly, it's been kind of a process. Initially, we had to rezone because there was, the parcel was divided in half and had two separate zones. So initially, they came to us requesting us to zone it all one zone so it would be easier to deal with. It was, they requested that it be rezoned to neighborhood commercial. And then, there was the request for, to add senior independent living to the list of allowed uses within, or excuse me, permitted uses within the NC zone. And as the commission discussed it, it, we realized that we may have put the cart ahead of the horse a little bit because since residential was not allowed in the NC zone, we didn't have any regulations regarding residential development. And so, we kind of had to look at this as a hybrid because yes, they're residential, but it's also a commercial venture for Eternal Springs as it's a service that they would be offering in, as part of the services that they have with the assisted living center at Ashford, which is just to the south. So, um, they, we've worked with them on language and I felt that there were still some things to iron out and to resolve, but they, they wanted to go ahead and move forward with it. And so, we have honored that request and here we are tonight. So, that covers the background. And so, the, the language is included as a separate, I apologize, that was my error, that they proposed, that is, this document that is added in with your staff report, so I apologize for that omission. And we, so this is, this is the location. It is just north and of the Ashford Assisted Living and Memory Care. Now, there, there is agreement regarding a definition of senior housing, and this was to make sure that we avoided the opportunity for age-restricted multifamily just being, you know, senior 55 apartments. And we wanted to make sure that that was not going to be able to slip in under this. And so, we made very definite restrictions on exactly what that would be. So age 65 or older, it would not require assisted living or 24-hour skilled nursing, and the dining services and other amenities such as housekeeping, transportation, all of that would, in various levels would, could be offered. And all, and then, the other that we were going to require with this, if it was going to be allowed in a commercial zone, was that it had to be co-located with an assisted living memory facility, either on adjacent or the same parcels, and that they had to be together. And that would provide the protection of just age-restricted multifamily being able to be developed.
Carla, can I ask a quick question?
Of course, please do.
On this, so, for this, the verbiage, you said that they were the ones that, that wrote up the verbiage, is that right?
They, we worked together on this, on the original, for the, the one when they wanted to add the senior independent living. And yes, and we worked together with them.
Is the red, is the red their language?
So theirs, yeah, so on this, um, they, Greg may be able to answer this when he gets up here. So this is just, the entire thing is, there is all new. Because as, as they're proposing now, they want to do an overlay. So all of this language would actually be, should be in red, because it would all, it would be a new addition. They have highlighted red sections as specific things to, that, that we've asked them to address. So that is kind of, so it's a little bit different than if we had, had typed that up. So this is their verbiage, okay?
The, the whole thing is their verbiage?
Yes.
Okay, so as you go through this and like you just summarized the, the senior housing definition, are you also gonna come back and talk about your feedback or comments?
Yes, that is all, and so, and that is, this is all kind of all in your staff report in, in more detail.
Yeah, I did.
So we, because we did address those, I just didn't include it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's what, yeah, I did read through the steps.
My organizational skills are a little off after the holidays. I'm just gonna keep going with that until I may. All right, so, they presented a couple of design concepts, and we, and we will, we'll get to that. So, one of the things, and we'll just kind of go through this from the analysis. So, the, they mentioned that the, um...
Carla?
Yes?
Can I jump in with one thing before we get to this?
Please, yeah, please do.
Uh, I just want it to be clear that we're not considering a site plan tonight. We're not considering a development at all. We're considering adopting an overlay zone that could produce a development. And what Carla's gonna be talking about is staff is concerned that the provisions of that overlay zone result in the type of development that is consistent with what we have done in Springville and what our, our intentions are moving forward. So, these concepts are simply illustrative of outcomes to which, with, that we would want to achieve with the code, or not achieve with the code. To, and these all came from the applicant, but do serve to illustrate some of staff's preferences and some of the applicant's concerns.
So, go ahead, you go ahead.
All of the design concepts then would be a possibility in the code as provided?
Uh, in the code as provided, potentially yes. And what Carla will go into is that there are some of these outcomes which staff has concerns with and wants to avoid, and to support the proposed amendment, we'd want to see elements in the code address that.
Yes, so the driveway-oriented design concept, there's three kind of scenarios of what these may look like. All of these have the driveways front-loading onto private drives and private streets, as you'll, as you can see. So, these are all driveway, you know, these are all front-loaded driveways here, 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 back here, they're all loading here, and here with excess parking, more front-loaded, and then on the origin, on the first one, kind of all, all of the same. The, the concern that we have with, with those is that it kind of, it contradicts what we've been trying to do with so many of our other developments where we are wanting the homes to front on a public street, to provide that connectivity, to provide that feeling of a neighborhood, a walkable neighborhood, and an integrated housing option.
So Carla, if you were to speak about these, since, since we're not looking at, at the layouts, right?
Yes.
If you were to speak about these layouts in terms of the proposed code, how, how would you, how would you summarize that?
Yes, so...
Because you kind of summarized, we don't want this type of layout.
Yes, so let me, so first of all, let me, this is, there were concerns that they had that are in here, and Greg will be able to address them more when it is his, his option, so I'm, I am not pretending to speak for him. But one of the concerns that they had, and, and it is in the staff report, was they, they were concerned about having their driveway, or their, their homes front on public streets. And they said they were not comfortable having our units face a public street, this would require our residents to have to park on one side of their home and walk to the other side to gain access. And this isn't why, I believe it meant why is for EMT access as well. The concern that we have with that is none of these concepts, concept one, two, or three, would really be big hits with our public, with fire, with our fire and EMT. They would require them to pull in and do, and either back out or do a lot of point turns to be able to get out of those, something that they try to avoid. And as we have done developments both in Westfields and as we're working on Lakeside, that's one thing that we have avoided, is that the emergency access is, is around, that they can, they can come in and then they can pull out. Now, that is representative in the courtyard-oriented design of concept that is the last one, where it allows fire and emergency vehicles to pull in, and then they would be able to go all the way around. They would also, if they, if necessary, to be able to park on the street and access the homes, and also have good access to all of the residents depending upon where they needed to be on, on this loop. So that was our kind of...
So the primary issue is not, not necessarily rear-facing homes, but rather emergency?
No.
Accessibility?
Okay, I'll speak just for a second to your question on the code. We, our code specifically prohibits across the, the city in terms of residential development, and I'm sure there'll be discussion about whether, whether this is residential development, but it looks and feels like residential development. We do not permit double frontage or, double frontage lots are lots that do not front on a public street, or in some cases, a courtyard or greenway. So in, we would like to see the zone written such that all units must either front on a public street, or a greenway or courtyard of a certain size. And we could include specific provisions about the, the routing of internal access that would be more likely to come during site plan, where our public safety department reviewed those. We could codify some of those elements, but in terms of the actual code concerns, it's primarily related, or from the urban design and planning perspective, related to having frontage on a public street or on a greenway. And relating to the public street particularly, we don't want to have a group of what appears to be cottages, or seem to be cloistered, or separated from the public way, or turned away from the public way, in a way that is not congruent with the residential character of the development in the area and the rest of the city. And obviously, we're looking at it from a broader perspective than simply providing, than the operator's perspective. But we feel that the creation, generally from a planning perspective, the creation of some usable, common or civic space, even in a small, generically, we may call this a pocket neighborhood, provides a much better experience and a much, a, a place of better value in the long term for residents and for the community than one that is oriented more insular and more oriented directly towards just the vehicle access. And that would be handled through those frontage requirements in the code.
So it's just not look and feel?
It's not just look and feel, but a lot of it is look and feel.
Let me ask you this question if we can. So, even if this, I realize this is just a layout that's laid out there, I, I don't see the fire department buying into this without being able to turn their trucks around anyway, right? I mean, is that, that would be fair to give to the, to the applicant to understand that that probably, I mean, I, especially, we're talking about a 65 and older facility, the opportunity for having more ambulance, more access for all of that would, and I know that, at least from my experience, that I've done some development myself, but that's like, the fire's like, no, we're not backing our fire truck down 50 feet, it's not safe, it's not, we're not doing it.
Right.
And I just wanted to make sure that that was cleared, probably, and I don't know if they've talked about that with the fire department or anybody else, but that, that kind of a dead-end road without some kind of a bulb at the end that can allow the trucks to turn around or something would probably not even be bought off by the fire department. Is that accurate or not?
There, there definitely would be concerns from public safety about that, and that's why we felt that in this specific instance, on this specific site, that the, the requirement to front on a courtyard or a public street also had the additional benefit of providing a pull-through circulation path for emergency vehicles.
Unless you can come up with some, yeah, that's why I was, that was why I was asking the same, the question. Is that the primary reason? Because look and feel, I think you can, you can deal with that. We could figure out how to deal with look and feel, and that can come later, but I think the bigger concern for me also is, is this piece.
Yeah, that, that would, unless there are, we codify it in some degree, that generally comes in terms, in the site plan process, where fire says, this doesn't meet fire code or we're not comfortable with the accessibility here, we need you to reconfigure it.
Yeah, but I, but I think it's important, like Frank said, or like Ralph said, Frank, like Ralph said, to make sure the applicant understands that we, we have to expect that.
Absolutely.
Because we know that the fire department will say that, instead of having him come out with his proposal and say, oh yeah, fire department won't say yes to this.
And that, one other question, have we seen this like, probably four times? Seems like this actual property, we've talked about it, what is the evolving, what's, why is it evolving and what's changing about it? Wouldn't maybe that gives us a quick summary of understanding? We've talked about, it's part of the system, we need to change the zoning, we need to change the, you know what I mean? I can't, I can't speak to all the changes that I've seen, but each individual one, but now we're at another change or another applicant, you know, thing, what has evolved?
And, and part of that is be, is, is like I said, with the, when they initially came to us looking to add senior living to this, we kind of got a little, staff kind of got a little bit ahead of ourselves, not really looking at going, oh, we don't really have design or, or residential development requirements for this zone because we've never allowed them before. And there was the discussion of, you know, do we look at this solely as a residential or solely as commercial? And so, it kind of has blossomed into this where we're like, okay, as the applicant, what would you like to see and what is something that meets your needs? And then, how is that going to, to work for us as, as a city and trying to maintain this look and feel and consistency of, as, as we've moved through other residential developments? So although this is a commercial venture in a lot of ways, it is, it is residential. People will be living here, you know, it's, it's going to be their homes. And so, it is important for us to, as staff, and to look at it as a residential development, and therefore, how does it, how does it integrate with our other policies and long-term planning for, for residential? It would be very different if they were just, if it was just additional assisted living and memory care like the Ashford is, then it would have a, a different set of guidelines. But because this is very residential in nature, that is the look and feel that we want to be consistent with what is going on throughout the rest. And it's also very close to, you know, adjacent residential communities and neighborhoods, and we want to maintain that, that feel as we go through.
Are these, are these units being sold individually then?
No, that is another aspect that we, that they have addressed and that, as we've, as we've talked with them, there is not, there will not be an option to subdivide the parcels. And we also would, one of the concerns that we brought up is that we would also want to make sure that they could not be condominiumized as well. And so, add that in rather than just the parcels, but make sure that we could avoid any condominiumization, I don't even know if that's a word, of the, of the, of the units, so that they stayed as, as a whole and were not able to be sold off individually.
And Ralph, to your initial question about kind of the steps, there's really been only one action taken on this property, and that was to change the zoning of the northern half from a residential zone to a commercial zone. And that, that's the only action that's gone through, city council has actually been approved.
Okay.
So there...
Yeah.
This guy's getting really familiar. We've seen him a few times.
You've seen him two other times.
Fair to him, but at the same time, I, I just was, I was curious how that, and he can speak to it when he gets here, but...
Yeah, and with the initial desire, with the initial request just to add the, this use to the neighborhood commercial zone, what, as Carla mentioned, staff and administration weren't comfortable that the elements or the, the regulations within the neighborhood commercial zone adequately addressed a form of development that wasn't originally anticipated in that zone. So that's why we went back to the applicant and said, probably the best way to accomplish what you want to do is an overlay with certain criteria. And you, as the planning commission, gave us a number of those criteria last time we met with you, that there be a narrow definition, that it be associated with an assisted living or a more advanced care facility. And we've, working with the applicant, they've proposed what we've brought back to you today, which would be a, adopting a ordinance to add this section to the code. They would subsequently have to come back and rezone this property to apply the overlay. But today, you're considering adopting an overlay code as an amendment to our zoning code.
So this applies to multiple properties then?
This applies to no properties until you recommend and the city council takes action to apply it to a property. Just, well, tonight, you're just considering putting it on the books.
And the overlay is only a neighborhood commercial overlay?
No, that is something that we, that we also want to make sure.
Overlay of our...
Because it, because there has the provision that it has to be associated with assisted living or memory care, it would then be an overlay that could be applied in whichever zone the assisted living and memory care was an allowed use. And that includes pretty much all of our commercial zones. It is in the professional office, the neighborhood commercial, the court, commercial corridor, and the highway commercial. So, those are all zones in which assisted living and memory care centers are allowed. So if someone wanted to do this, that, that would be something that would need to be considered.
Even though this is senior independent living?
Even though it is senior independent living, because there is a provision that it has to be associated with one of, with an assisted living or memory care facility, there is a possibility that anyone who has one of, has an assisted living in, in any of the zones in which it is allowed and wants to do this, could request that overlay.
Would it have to be contiguous with an assisted living?
Yes, yes.
So it'd have to have both?
Yes, you would have to have both.
You could, you could also simply make the recommendation that it only be applicable, only be able to be applied to the neighborhood commercial zone. Our concern was that was not clear in the proposed amendment. It looked like that was the intent, because the amendment references the provisions of the underlying neighborhood commercial zone in a, in a section on conflicts. But we wanted to bring that up to the commission to see if, what your level of comfort or your desire was about the applicability of this overlay moving forward. Any application of it would still require legislative action by the city council, but you couldn't make the application to apply it to your property outside of the NC zone if it was adopted to only be applicable to the NC zone without subsequently amending the ordinance.
So if an assisted living facility is bordered by a zone that is not, that assisted living is not allowed in, would they have to change the zone of, if they had that parcel next to it, they would have to change the zone to an allowable zone for assisted living? Or would the overlay be laid over whatever zone was next to the assisted living?
So, yes, it, it does. So, because most of the, these zones of the professional office, the NC, the CC, and the HC are often adjacent to each other, it, that, it may or may not happen, but there's also areas where they are close to Village Center, or Main Street South Gateway, or, you know, even light industrial manufacturing. And so, if, yeah, they, I, my understanding, Josh, is that we would then have to make it so that it was allowed in the, the connecting zone if the assisted living is not. So it could be a lot of, so, I don't, I don't know how that would, that would work. That's more of a Josh question.
The senior independent living would be a permitted use within this overlay?
Yes.
And depending on how you choose to recommend and how the council chooses to adopt the ordinance, it could be applied to all some or one, it could be written to be applicable to all some or one zone, or none of the residential zones, or all of the commercial zones. But the underlying zone would not necessarily need to have assisted living, memory care as a permitted use, but it, the...
It has to be adjacent.
The, this zone needs to be adjacent to, or this development can only occur when it is immediately adjacent to, contiguous with such a facility.
Makes sense.
I mean, that's part of the overlay.
Correct, that's a requirement of the overlays, it can only be applied where it meets those conditions.
Is there, is there, one more question?
Oh, cool, no, you're fine.
So is there a stipulation, if we're applying this to a broad, in a broad sense, is there any stipulation like how big the memory care facility has to be compared to the housing? I mean, are we opening the door where someone could make a small memory care assisted living and then have a housing development around it that's all 65 and older? Is there like any kind of control for that? Because I, I understand from the applicant's point of view, he's saying, well, this makes a great stepping stone for everybody, right? They're able to go into a home where they can feel comfortable in the neighborhood, they, they're still free, they're still have all their active things they can do, and then as their life progresses or things change, then they're able to move into the facility. And it provides a nice progression for someone as they get older to work through that, as opposed to someone just saying, well, yeah, we got a memory care facility, we've got a, a thing, and when we got 65 units, there's no way we're ever gonna accommodate, you know, people that go from one level to the next.
Yes, so there is no stipulation on the size of the memory care. However, they do include, if you look at numbers eight and nine under the 11, the proposed 11-5, 905, limiting the acreage and the gross number of units that could be developed. Now, once again, this is their, their proposal, and it would, and, and so, they have included limitations as to the number of units allowed in the overlay. And whether, then you would just need to determine whether or not those, those requirements and those kind of stopgap measures are sufficient enough, or if you would like them to be smaller or, or, you know, delineated more. But they did include those to, that, and felt that that would be looking, and, and granted, much of what they've done is based solely upon the parcels that they own or what they're looking at. And so that is, some of the concern we have is that we need to make sure that if this is done in a, in a manner that can be applied in, to other areas, that it, that it still meets all of the concerns and, and the goals of the city, so. All right. So, are we good? Any more questions? So are we good? Any more questions there? I, I, I don't feel like I need to read the report to you. You guys are all very capable of reading and understanding it often much better than I'm able to articulate it. So if I, if you feel like we've answered your initial questions, we can move to the next. Josh has any other comments?
Just one more point of clarification. So in, in the case of, of this going through and anybody else in any of these zoning areas that wanted to apply this overlay would still go through the, the approval process of, of, in, in the permit, the permitting process, right? Cause they could not use it for that without an overlay applied, which they would have to apply for.
Yes, and they would have to come to you for that overlay to be applied. And like I said, they-
Right, go through this process.
They would have to go through the process, like for any zone. And like I said, it, the, the, kind of the gist of what we've gotten from the applicant is that they are considering it only applied to the neighborhood commercial. But because that is not specifically delineated in their language, we just wanted to make you aware that without tightening up that language and make, and, and putting that more definitively in here, it could happen in other zones where that is allowed. Okay.
Sorry, I have a, I have a nitpicky question.
You're totally fine.
If, if we have a, a sixty-five-year-old family or person, whatever, living in that place, and their children suddenly find themselves on hard luck, can those children come move in to that place so that you have? I mean, it's, it's, it's no longer really independent living at that point, I would think, or how does that work?
I think we just need to review the text that's in front of you, cause the answer is gonna be-
I've been trying to peruse through it here.
Yeah, what do we think their proposed amendment says? And what would be the intent you would want to achieve? And if we don't feel the proposed text achieves some concern you may have, we can add or recommend, or you obviously recommend adding a provision to address that. I don't have a copy of the proposal in front of me, but I'll steal Carla's.
Sorry, I should have put it in.
Yeah, it doesn't currently address, address anything like that. It says that it's specifically not for families with children under the age of eighteen, living with them. But it doesn't address anything as far as familial relationships being residing within the home.
Adult children or-
Or even something that could be even addressed that doesn't address specifically familial relations would be even just subleasing that.
Yeah, and, and so how, you know, how we deal with that through zoning code versus their lease agreements that they have with individuals, that's, you know-
Well, you could also propose codifying a requirement, an operational requirement, either here or in, in an amendment, an amendment to a business license section that said the operator's required to maintain certain, maintain or enforce certain operational parameters that could include co-residency, those type of things.
Yeah, cause anyone here, according to this, if they were nineteen years old, could live in that facility. If I'm understanding, not that that's bad.
Pursuant to whatever the lease is, yes.
There may be somebody that's trying to take care of a older parent or something else like that as opposed to a family. But anyway, maybe the applicant will speak to it, or is the applicant gonna speak to us at all or?
Yeah, you, you typically invite the applicant to speak after the staff presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carla?
Just on the, the courtyard oriented design concept, just to be clear. So what is facing the, the private drive is a garage?
Yes, those are all the backloaded garages with the entryways facing out into the green courtyard space.
Which is, again, is just one way they could be configured. You could have a rear do, man door into the garage or from the side of a unit, of an end cap unit. There's, I believe lots of ways to address the shared interests between us and the applicant in terms of urban design, neighborhood design, and operational concerns for, from them as an operator.
What are the little light, lighter gray vests?
Is, no, no.
Walkways. In, no, inside, inside, that is the, that's the garage footprint, okay.
Any others? Good job, Carla.
All right.
You got peppered with questions today. That's good news. Greg, did you wanna take a few minutes?
And I'm happy to answer as many questions as you'd like. Just to address a few, if I remember all the, the points that, that were brought up. So e- each of these concepts do meet fire code architect. I actually just sent him a message and he confirmed, he's like, every single one of those would meet fire code with hammerheads. It's very normal for us to have a hammerhead. Unlike even at our assisted living, we have a hammerhead in the back for fire code. And so it's very normal for them to have access as long as there's certain widths and such.
So a hammerhead is just this single-
Hammerhead is like a- This shape, so the fire truck can pull in, pull back out, and be able to foot, still flip around and on and back out.
Okay, thanks.
And if this-
It looks like a hammer, I see now, okay.
If the city wants to have the wording to where it only applies to neighborhood commercial, that's, I don't mind that at all. That, that's great, as opposed to other, other zones. So however you guys wanna do that, it's fine. So really this is an extension of our assisted living. We're gonna be leasing out of our assisted living. It's gonna be like managed out of our assisted living. We're gonna have, provide the food from the assisted living kitchen activities. There's gonna be staffed by the assisted living, so it's really an extension. Like I mentioned, when we came here, what, April of, of last year, we, we mentioned that most developers would want to come in and build a large independent living facility. That's very normal, and you'll see those all, I mean, there's like legacy South Jordan by the temple up there. They have independent living and assisted living, and they look the same, but they're licensed. Like, one is licensed and one is not. It's like a big apartment complex with all seniors that are, you know, eighty, nine years old. I, I personally, like, if, when my mom moves into a place like this, she, she's going to struggle with the idea of moving into a large assisted living because she lives in her own home. And she would like to, if I'm gonna bridge that gap between, okay, mom, you need assisted living, and she's not quite ready and not willing to do it, then I could take her to a, a independent living cottage and say, mom, what do you think about this then? You can have your car in a garage, it's a single car garage, and it looks like a home. That's a bit easier sell for me to my mom than this big independent living facility where she just feels like she's just, like, lost her independence. This allows her to have a little more independence, so I love this concept. There's a, a project in Alpine called River Meadows that has this. There's a project in Sandy that's, I think it's just wrapping up on one hundred and tenth South and probably a thousand east roughly. It used to be called Atria, it's called Cedarwood now. And I, I just think this is the way of the future for people to feel like they're still in a home. And so the, I, and working with the staff, it was great working back and forth with everything and addressing things. When we got to the point of, of the staff saying, well, we really like this inner courtyard, that's where we, we were like, well, that's a game changer for us, we're not gonna move forward on that. Technically, I could get twenty-four units if we did it that way. With the way I wanna do it, we'd only get twenty to twenty-one. So I'm not trying to game the system to get more. I'm, I'm actually trying to make this design so that I'm a hundred percent confident when you bring your parent here, they're gonna be like, okay, I can do this. There, I want them to drive up into it, pull up in their driveway, have a front door, and have it feel like a home. This, I understand the idea of like all the other developments of, you know, you're building them for twenty-year-olds, thirty-year-olds, and having a rear loaded, I think that's how you call it, rear loaded garage. It, it doesn't feel like a home, and I want this to feel like a home for these seniors that are struggling already with the idea of having to move again and, you know, losing their independence. And so to me, that's, that's a big deal. I want these to look really nice for them. And just all, all the access things that we talked about, like for, when you go visit your parent, if you were to go visit them with this layout, you're gonna have to go find a parking stall.
You can use the mouse there if you want to.
Oh, okay.
We can all see it up here.
Oh, cool. Um, so like, for example, if, if your loved one lived here, you'd have to figure out, okay, well, I've gotta go park over here and then walk over to visit my mom here. And then say, okay, mom, I'm gonna come pick you up. It's just the convenience of it is, is not conducive to seniors. So like, would you say, okay, come over here, drive here, park here for just a minute? And then let's have you go through your garage and, and come out into the street? I, I just don't, to me, it doesn't feel home-like. I don't, to me, this is, like I said, an extension of the Ashford, and I don't think you'd want, I, I, I think the city would benefit better from independent living cottages than a high-rise independent living facility. So.
What, what would, what would change if you, can't you just flip those so that they're facing the roads that you've got in here? So that it would be, the, the garage would be on front, it would be like some of your other ones?
Well, there's no, there would be no driveway that, that like a kid could park, like this, the child could park in to go and visit their parent.
Unless they parked in the garage, right?
Right, but the hope would be that that's where their car, the resident's car, about twenty-five percent of the residents would actually drive.
But it, it addresses your, one of the points you were just making is you want them to feel like they're driving up to their home, right? And that would address that piece, right, if you flip those?
By turning it around so that-
Yeah.
The staff is not recommending that you flip them.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I, I don't understand why we wouldn't recommend that, other than parking.
But we're not really, we're not really proposing or approving a layout, if I'm not understanding.
I understand, I understand that, but in order to address, in order to address this, we have, that's why we have the layouts there.
All right, let's, I'll make a note of that, and when we, when you get to discussion after the hearing, we could, I could try to understand what you're talking about later.
We flip back through some of the others from where they're at?
You've got them also right here, Ralph.
Yeah, they're just in your packet.
So the, the intent is then that, the way that you proposed it, that there would be a driveway that was enough for someone to park on?
Correct.
As a follow-up question, how often are your residents intermingling with each other? Like if they were in this, cause I, I had a-
This courtyard?
Yeah, so I'm curious because, so I, my grandmother actually lived up in Riverwoods for a while.
Okay, yeah.
And so I'm very familiar with the concept, also very familiar with what's proposed here. Even personal feedback that I've had from her is the disconnection from neighbors.
Yeah.
So, and as far as how you're planning to operate, how are, are you planning on neighbors inter, interacting with one another? Are you try, encouraging that, or is that not as much of a concern? So with this, the thing that we'd be encouraging them is to go and do the activities within the assisted living facility. We would also even look at the idea of making one of these like a, like a clubhouse type thing. And so that's where they're interacting and having some part-time activities out there. But a lot of these residents are gonna be more independent, that won't socialize that much. Like, for example, them using this courtyard, where they're, you know, eighty-five, ninety years old on average, the likelihood of them spending time out there, like in the winter, zero. In the hot summer, zero. Not, not zero, there, there could be a couple residents getting out and walking around. But it's not, that, that is not going to like cause our residents to go out and be like super social, like by having this design. Well, and, and that's, I, so there's a book back called Livable Streets by Bruce Appleyard. I, I'd encourage you to look into that, cause in terms of street design and interacting as a community, it's actually flip-flopped. When there's porches and ways to even just sit on a porch and look at your neighbor, there's higher interaction and higher interface. And so I think what the intent in terms of what Josh is trying to do is in terms of, and how it applies to the rest of Springville, is encouraging that interaction as well as meeting the needs of what you may have. I am just, I'm, I'm asking because I feel that there's a way, that there's a middle ground in terms of encouraging the pedestrian interaction with, and neighborhood interaction. We're calling it a neighborhood.
Yeah.
As well as being able to provide, you know, a driveway for a, a, for me, a family member to come park in. I don't think that there necessarily needs to be a cap necessarily either. Like, I don't think that's one of the concerns that we're raising right now either.
A cap of what?
Of, of density, like units per acre. Like, you, you included a maximum of twelve in your application. I, I think depending on the context, like there could be points in the city where that could be, it could be more. So I, I, I'm only raising this as, and, and trying to understand more about why you've landed where you are. But my initial thought-
Specifically with like the, the courtyard face to face?
Well, more just why, like, understanding why you feel strongly about the driveway access and making sure that it's easy to, you know, go pick up a loved one when you're going to take them to a dinner or something.
I would say, probably, I mean, like, I get that idea of this design, if it's like a fifty-five plus where they're very active. These are people that are gonna be close to their nineties, that are very, very immobile. And that, like, their next step is assisted living where they're needing help, you know, possibly in a wheelchair, with a walker, highly likely. Their ability to maneuver is not, not significant.
Yeah, just asking a couple clarifying questions.
Yeah, that's good. Any other questions?
I guess maybe, and maybe this isn't the right place to ask the question, are any of these roads, are they like, is this like a PUD type situation where the, you know, where we've got sewer water going down the road? How's that being addressed in this kind of a layout so that we have, you know what I mean? We gotta, we gotta get all the laterals, the sewer laterals. It's not a city road, right?
Right, we would be maintaining like snow removal.
It would be very much like a PUD, right?
Would you want me to answer that right now?
I, I don't, I don't know what forum we need to answer that, but I think that's a valid concern.
It would be just like any other commercial site with multiple buildings on it. Everything outside of the right-of-way would generally be a private lateral. Anything that served multiple services out of the private right-of-way might, we might have to have the discussion down the road at site plan about whether that requires some type of public utility easement. We've just dealt with a very similar instance over here behind the Jefferson School on the townhomes that you've kind of reviewed last year, as to how those utilities are provided. And those are actually fee simple townhome lots, which adds a level of complexity. Here it's more simple, cause it's one lot in a more of a commercial development where they just, they don't even have to have individual meters or services to each unit. It can just be one kind of interior loop that's, has a single meter in the park.
Cause it's, cause it's all one home, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Non-divisible.
The text that we, we proposed, I, it sounds like that wasn't given to you and the staff? Is that right? Okay. So I, I mean, that was my hope, was that we were coming to discuss that because there's really only like one or two items that it seemed like we were not in agreeance with the staff. And so we were like, well, let's, let's go to planning commission to explain our thoughts, and I would love your feedback on, on those. And so I don't know if you guys have a copy now, I've got copies here, if that's okay, you have now. Anyway, that's, I, I think one of the bigger ones is, is that I would just love your thoughts on the idea of having a garage, like those townhomes that are just to the northwest of the Ashford, of our assisted living facility. And when you drive down there, they're all garages that face there. I don't, I, I don't feel that this works with what, what we would want to provide for the seniors, and I would love to hear your feedback.
Townhomes you're referring to?
Uh, I, I think they do. Yeah, I just, i- in my mind, it doesn't feel as residential as what this would feel for these seniors. I mean, their option is for us to do a large independent living facility. I, I don't think that's in the best interest of anyone. I don't think it would, from a business standpoint, I, I don't wanna have another eighty-bed facility that we're managing. Having twenty units is totally manageable, so.
Hey, Josh and Carla, when was the last time you guys, well, I guess I should ask you too, Greg. When was the last time the three of you put your heads together and had a conversation about this, sort of?
Quite a, quite a while ago.
Quite a, quite a while ago. We've discussed via email and seem to have arrived at this impasse. Uh, I'd like to have more conversations, because I struggle to understand how some of Greg's interests are met in his design. Like, there is no driveways in the plans he's shown and the parking is actually as, the average distance to parking is not actually any different.
What do you mean, there's no driveway?
Well, click back a couple slides, show me where the driveways are.
Click on this?
Yeah, where's the driveway?
So that one, I, I would not do. Um, but this one, there's a driveway there.
It's not big enough to park in.
No, it would, it would be enough for a single car.
Well, that's only a single-car garage, that's not a-
No, the driveway would be enough for them to be off the road there.
Okay, I mean, if it would be, then that, that's fine. I've just not seen in any of these drawings that those are actually parkable.
Yeah, that, that would accommodate a single-car garage, or si- single-car on the driveway, plus, plus a single car in the-
Well, let me, let me tell you why I asked the question, yeah. That's why I asked the question, because I, uh, Hunter, a few minutes ago, you know, referred to how close we are to it, an agreement, because, and I agree a hundred percent. We're really close, but I feel like maybe we're missing s- some, some intimate conversations, not email or texting or anything like that. Where we come up with sort of something that we can, that you can agree on. And, and if, and if Greg, if he can't come up, if you can't come up with something that Josh agrees on, then I guess we have a different conversation, right?
And, and part of that too is really, I, I think the discussion we're having here is not necessarily specific to your parcel. It's, it's how this affects the rest of the zoning of Springville. And that needs to be addressed before we can move forward, because there's too much gray in terms of how this can apply to the neighborhood commercial zone, as well as even just with some of the language that you've included in red here. It's, i- i- it's not subjective. It's kind of, it's some of it, like the building facades facing a, a public street shall have a residential character. It's, it's ambiguous. It, it's not specific or defined to where it could be codified and followed later on. And so that's where the concern is, is not, not necessarily, I think, that's why I say, I think there's room to land at an agreement on your parcel, but that's not necessarily what we're discussing. It's how this really affects the zoning of the rest of Springville.
Yeah. And, and we've had multiple conversations, um, with staff, and I think that's where we felt like we were just not breaking through. And so I wanted to come in front to kind of get feedback, and, and maybe the thing is, you know, postponing this meeting to the next one, I'm fine with that. And I would love to have, if there's a couple of you that you guys all agree on, like, hey, you two go, come and let's, I'll discuss this. I do think it's something we could discuss within a matter of-
Doesn't work that way, sorry.
Ten minutes, or one person, I, I don't know, just-
Yeah, we, it's, it's between you guys. Josh? My question for you is, because I feel like you, you sort of feel like, after this conversation, maybe there are some thoughts that you might have where we could maybe find a, a place we could meet for this specific parcel.
That's tricky.
Conversation.
What I think-
I'm not asking you to commit to any-
Yeah, I think the side rail for me is, like, the condition that Greg's showing on this concept to south of the driveway would not be acceptable in any circumstance to, to the community development. So where we have a, a unit that is fronting with a front door and a garage on an interior alleyway or driveway that then has its rear or secondary facade facing the public street, that, that out, that's a kind of a hard side rail for us in terms of negotiation.
Is it a hard side rail because of look and feel, or because of a door?
Look and feel, and or, and just the general principle that buildings front, especially residential character buildings front on a street. And we don't do double-frontage lots.
Unless you put like a porch or something out on that side.
Sure, if you, if you had provisions where essentially you make that the front of the house in terms of the gable and the porch, but it's a porch off of a bedroom, I don't care if your bedroom's in the front of the house. But, and if you have a backside that, it could come down to naming. If you have a backside that is a driveway and, and a door to a living space, but as Hunter mentioned, there's not enough specificity in this, or objectiveness in what's been proposed by the applicant to, uh, address those concerns. Like, we wouldn't allow anything but a three-foot fence uh, on that side. We wouldn't allow a six-foot fence. Uh, it would have to be fenestrated like the front of a house. It would have to, for all intensive purposes, other than perhaps it didn't access a common living space, but a private living space like a bedroom, uh, which we would allow in a normal house, if for some reason people wanted to put their front door into their bedroom. Those, those are the kind of elements that may provide some overlap in a zone of agreement where, that we could investigate.
So basically, six and seven.
Chance to read through all this and provide, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Multi- multiple times, and we've actually gone back and forth for a couple of months on this, on this. Yes, multiple, and that's why some things are in red, is because they were noted as responding to our last set of comments.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good. I just, I said, I, I think we're doing what Josh said we don't want to do, and get caught up on the site plans. Because I, you know, back to what Hunter said, the, really, these two issues that are in conflict with what the city wants to accomplish are the ones we need to address and clean up in order for this to become an overlay, uh, for this kind of a zone. So, I, I, I think it's probably pretty straightforward. We, we, if we want to maintain that look and feel, then we, we probably need to make sure that the overlay states that. That it needs to face the, the street, um, needs to have it. And, and I think that's kind of the, probably the hurdle we ought to- That's the hurdle we ought to clear. Yeah.
And, and that's where, again, it's just further conversation, and I would think that we're encouraging to the applicant and with community development that if this is the preferred layout, I don't, and again, I don't think necessarily this layout is inferior or anything. It's, it's addressing what Josh is saying in terms of the current code doesn't currently allow a rear-facing unit to face a public way. And so if that was addressed and codified, then that's how we would be able to move forward, of whether that's adding a double frontage on your unit, or if it's flipping the unit to face the public way. So there's, there's ways to go about it, but we just haven't landed there yet. And the code that's proposed here isn't clear enough for us.
Uh, item number seven on the second page, I, I thought we addressed that, but we, I mean, we could easily add in there. Cause like, we put in there that we would ha- the facades facing a public street shall have a residential character and shall have um, architectural treatments consistent with adjacent residential neighbors. Like, our thought is like having like that, like a covered porch, making it look like it's the front of the house, but really they'd be accessing it from the other side.
And that's where that, that line that you, uh, specify is great, but it's not specific enough to be codified for future use in Springville. It would need to be adding specifically like a covered porch with a, a, at least a mandor. There, there'd have to be a way that we would have to land that to be able to then implement, and then community development be able to enforce later on.
Yeah. And, and I can promise you that, um, the idea that there potentially will just start popping up several assisted living facilities with independent living in the community, it's not gonna happen. You, you'll have a two, three in this community. When you look at other cities, you, you, they're not, it's not like you're seeing a half dozen or a dozen of these ty- like, this type of, uh, project. So I, I don't think-
We have a demographic that I think will see a lot more of this in, in, in the near future. Yeah, but we have to, what, what we have to do is make this mutually applicable.
But what I was gonna say is-
Anywhere in the city that we want this to apply.
Doesn't matter if it's assisted living or independent living or a house.
Yeah. Is the feedback like, to have it just be neighborhood commercial, does that make, is that something that can generally, you guys feel like, yeah, that, let's just keep it to the smaller footprint? Cause there's very little neighborhood commercial.
I mean, I, this is more in the discussion than, than we maybe wanna go, but um, yeah, so with, with, if we limit it to just neighborhood commercial, then we open up ourselves to re-litigating this when you have someone who has an assisted living that wants to do this, but doesn't happen to be a neighborhood commercial. And why should they not be able to do it versus that?
And, and just as a reference for you, because of that, like, we have lots of Springville that's not, it's still green and it's still available to be developed. So currently, there's no, another specific case where this could potentially happen, but it's not to say that twenty years down the line, there wouldn't be.
Happen, yeah.
Or ten.
And, and the, making this overlay, whether they are there not, or not, they could do, someone could do this. And that's what we, why we have to make sure that it's, that it's language that is clear, that can be regulated, that, that we can actually, you know, be able to apply to anybody that comes in that meets those requirements.
Do you feel, I mean, for me, do you feel like you've got some stuff you can go back and?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned, like, because Josh and I, we, we've talked about that multiple times, that specific, uh, rear-loaded, um, and I, I, we just disagree there, and I'm not gonna build that. And so in my mind, I'm like, well, maybe we just do an office building and, and can this.
Cause I think that is one of the challenges we're all facing, is that we're talking about something that's gonna apply to the whole city, and you've got a specific piece of property, and you know what pencils out on your project.
Well, specific for the needs of the residents, though. It's not just-
I understand that, but I'm just saying, we have to, we have to take a broader approach and say, how is this gonna apply to any, for the next twenty, thirty years? And how is this gonna apply, because we're talking about making a broad stroke overlay kind of a situation as opposed to you've come for a variance on this specific property and this specific thing, then that's a different kind of approach, as opposed to saying, we're gonna, we're gonna write city code that helps to make this project work. And if I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding something.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for, for your patience too, it's been a while. And thanks for putting together this stuff, so that we could review it. What kind of conversations do we have here? Oh, open it for- All right, I'll open it for public hearing. Do we, oh, sorry.
Not seeing anyone coming to the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any, any conversation here amongst ourselves? I'll tell you, my feeling is, I, I would love to see this happen, just because it's, it's right next to each other, and I think it, it's a, it's a good thing to have in our city. So, I'd love to see us figure out a way to make it happen while not affecting, um, any long-term issues in the city.
And that, that's more, like, I, I would rather move to continue the conversation than just deny, because I, I don't want to see it just die completely. I, I do think it is a, an amenity to the city and to our residents. I, I do think though that there's, I mean, whether it's hashing out layouts, like, there's a way to land in a middle that can address both sides.
I would agree with both of those statements.
Agreed.
Any other comments?
I, I think one thing we have to consider though is that he's coming with a specific need, specific thing, and we're talking about a general policy, so-
Which is what we wanna do, is we wanna recommend something that will be, like you said, Ralph, that will apply broadly.
If we want him to have to be continuing to be at odds with, you know, I, I'm agree, I agree, continuing, and if everybody feels like that would be a good, you know, if both parties can feel like they can do that, I think it's a great asset to the city. I would love to see it happen, but I also see what Josh is saying is that, like, literally, if we have house backs to the road, we've, we've sat here before with others that have asked for scenes like this, and we're like, well, nope, it doesn't match up with what the city's trying to do, so if, if, I guess that's up to the applicant and to Josh to figure out how they pursue it further, but I don't think this is a place for us to really debate those things.
I do think that we have the opportunity to like, give some direction to the, uh, community development, uh, team and like, what things are we, are we most like concerned in, on? What kind of compromises do we think would meet the needs of that specific group of, you know, type of residents that also would, you know, adhere to the residential kind of guidelines that we want, you know, like, s- give some of our feedback to, to them so that they can then have a place to, to go from or to start a discussion.
Yeah, I, I, as far as suggestions, like, I, I don't wanna disparage anything that has been done by the applicant. I, I would encourage, uh, uh, going back to the previous point that I, I made and asked, is even if it is porch sitting in spring and, and fall, or whenever it is, I, I would encourage higher interactivity in the design between residents and the, the units themselves. Going back to, I think, what community development had made in, in their write-up for this particular application was, looking at, looking at it as a pocket neighborhood, rather than filling the need of, only of the facility. Um, and that's where I, I think landing at a middle ground that would just encourage inter, the interactivity a little bit more, rather than focusing primarily on the automobile access to the unit. Whether that's been done in Springville or not, I, I think there's ways to improve that, even as we've done it in the city.
I think it's important to acknowledge though on that point, one, this, the one we're looking at right here does encourage interactivity, I think. And number two, and, and, and number two, but again, I know we're talking specifically about this right now. But number two, if you look at the different proposals, it's not like he's looking for something that, I mean, the one that we like the most has the most units on it.
Right, and that's, that, I, that goes back to my previous point, that even for future developments, I don't know that we necessarily need to put a cap on the number of units allowed. I think if it meets fire safety and it meets the context or the, the neighborhood commercial zone that we're talking about.
The consumer will dictate.
The, the consumer and the market will dictate the allowed density, and, not the allowed, the-
Comfortable.
The comfortable density that fits the context that it's in. So I don't know that that, that's necessarily an issue for the city. It's really coming back to the inter- interaction within the pocket neighborhood itself, as well as how it plugs into the rest of the community, front-facing to the street.
I think that, that latter piece is the most important piece, because as I look at these, there's opportunities, there's them on their porch. They have plenty of people that can interact with.
Have porch, I think that, I think that's an important thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good point.
Was saying previously on saying, okay, specifically it needs to have, you know, a porch in this and that, the specific things. Like, I don't have an issue with the driveway being, you know, what is out to the front, as long as there is also a porch or something there on that same side that creates a, a place for them to be outside or to, you know, have that connection to the neighborhood. If it's just garages and, um, a door that, and you wouldn't ever spend the time out there or even have space to put your whatever holiday decorations, that seems to me, like, even if that is, even if they have a, a front-facing to a courtyard, that, that seems very, um, I don't know, sterile to me. Yeah, when, when driving by, that's all you see.
So that's for us, that's for the people driving by, because, because again, going back to your comment, it's consumer-driven at the end of the day. And if they don't care if there's a bunch of places to put.
Think that-
But if, but if we're saying, we're dictating, if we're dictating saying, no, we wanna have a, a porch so that they can commu- we wanna have a porch so they can put up a Christmas lights or whatever, then that's us dictating, it's not the-
I'm not saying that, that it's sterile just for visitors. I would, I would feel, if I lived there, I would feel like it was very, you know, not inviting with the neighbors. And so I think that that's important to make sure that we, is in there.
It would be interesting, if we're talking about independent senior living, it would be interesting for us to understand. I mean, I know that you've said that people in their nineties or whatever will be living there. It would be interesting for us to understand what the democrat, demographics really are. Is it sixty-seven, sixty-eight years old? Then I think that's- Then, I think that's.
Older. My, my mother, we just, this last eight, ten months, we've put my mother through this, and she's living in Linden right now, uh, um, in, in assisted living, and that, it, it's, it's, it's really interesting to, to see, and, and as we've worked with her, there isn't a lot of socialization, unless it's in a, the, the lunchroom, or the.
But I'll bet you and your wife go up there and decorate her room.
My, well, my sister does, yes, they, they decorate her door. And her door gets, yeah, so it's.
And that's enough for her, right?
Right.
And so I look at this, and I'm like, am I trying to dictate that, that these people have to?
Yeah, so I think it's important, more important that we apply the, the, the broad, uh,
Agreed.
view of what we want the city to look like.
Yeah.
A door facing the.
Yeah, than it is to say, wh- wh- what do we expect these adults to, well, maybe, maybe the next generation of ninety-year-olds are gonna be more active, I don't know, but I, I don't really care either, because our, our job is to look at it and say, well, how do we want the city to look when people drive down that street, and so.
That's why, that's why.
For us, yeah.
Are we dictating how they should behave in their home? Are we dictating how, when people drive past, how they feel?
Sit on the porch.
I, I know, but, but, but again, that's why I say, the differentiation in my comment was, are we, are we saying this because we want it to look nice for the city? Are we saying it because we want these people to interact? And if we're saying they want people, these people to interact, I say, no, but if it's for the city, that's another story.
And that's where I think it's, it's two, it's both, it's, the porches, just as the example, are going to, one, foster what the community wants in terms of appeal and visual aesthetic, but it also is going to encourage interaction.
Yeah.
So, whether it's one or the other, I don't think it necessarily matters, is, it's more.
I think it matters.
It's.
Cause, cause we don't understand the demographics like he does.
Right, but.
If the demographics are what you just described, Eric, people don't care, but if, but if we're saying it's important to the city to see that, I support that.
And, and I, I think that it's dangerous to fall into the, well, the market will determine what people will accept. The, people also accept what is there, because that's the only thing, and that's the only option.
I don't disagree with that, but, but we, there's data out there that we could turn to for this, and it sounds like you understand it better. But again, if it's for the city, and curb appeal to the city, I say, yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, but if we're trying to force people to interact with each other, I mean.
You don't wanna talk to me on my porch?
That's right.
I want to talk to you right here.
I was gonna say.
Even if you have a nice porch, and you're, and I, I'm just the person, I'm not gonna go talk to you. So I, no, I, I think, I think we've got the general idea.
Bird when they drove past your house.
But let's come back to what we think we would like to recommend.
Could I, could I just say one other thing, since everybody's kinda talked about what they, the one thing I, if you're asking for what things that I see on a planning commission side of it, I think, especially with the senior living, having a driveway that you could pull a car in and park it, you could see to a family, would be like a big thing, that I think would be an asset to the city. Uh, my dad's ninety-eight years old, so I know he doesn't drive anymore, we, we, uh, but I have to park there, someone's there all the time, pretty much, at one point in the day or another. But I also don't want to be having them, if he was available to drive at a previous time, it was really nice for him to be able to pull off the main road and to park, so that you have something that's like, a little quieter neighborhood to be able to pull in, and that's why I kinda like this concept, in the sense that they're not on the busy road. They pull off when they're backing out of the garage, they're backing past Bob's house, as opposed to, you know, I'm pulling out on the freeway, or on the, cause that's how my dad lost his driver's licenses, that he would try to pull out on a busy road, and they were in an accident, and then they, he got sued, and then he lost his driver's license. So, um, I just think that part of the concept, to me, is like, a, a great thing, if that quiet neighborhood allows them to mix, to meet, but also to have one parking spot at least in the driveway, and if they don't have a car, and you're like my sister, she has her garage thing, and she pulls clear in the garage, and then I pull in the driveway, so. Anyway, that's just my comments, and then you guys can figure out whether you wanna reapply, or, you know, get together, or whatever else, that's, that would be my only input I have.
I feel like there's been a couple of outcomes, this com- well, three if we include, uh, interact, interacting, but one.
We don't have to.
I know, I like that, I would like that.
One is making sure, one is making sure that, um, that, the street-facing piece is appropriate for what we want as a city. Number two, and I agree with you, Ralph, and I don't know if you, the rest of you agree with this, uh, a place, a, a, a small driveway that a person can park their car.
Yeah.
And the la- the last piece is, yeah, interaction.
And, and I, cause I agree that with, with that, like, residents of, like, that age group, they're not, I don't even wanna walk, you know, down a whole long courtyard to get to my house, because I happen to live in the one that's furthest away from, you know, where my friends can park, or whatever it may be. And, and so, and having a mother and a sister who are older, that are also not very mobile, she, my sister, will not even, like, walk on a sidewalk, even if it's flat, if it's at all snowy, because she's terrified of slipping, and so, we are, look, you know, when we're planning for where they can, they can live, we are making sure that there's a drive, a garage that's enclosed, that they can that they can go in and not have to walk long distances outside, and, um, uh, making sure that they have, but my sister walks her dog, and she likes to go and go on the streets, and, you know, not on the street, but, you know, sidewalks. Um, because she interacts with people, other people walking their dogs, when they're that, so it needs to be something that's easily accessible, for people to come and visit, and also that, the.
Residents are getting in and out.
Yeah, the residents have close access to getting in and out of their home.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's encompassed the most.
Yep.
Yeah.
That conversation, right? So, I would say, I would say, Josh, do you feel like, um, the conversation we just had right now works for the city? If we're gonna do an overlay like this?
I think it comes down to how we translate, and how Greg and I understand what you said. Cause that's kinda been the crux through the process, is having a mutual understanding of what the intent of the planning commission was, as we kinda discuss acceptable solutions, and I'll do my best, uh, I, I mean, I've, what I've heard is that uh, espec- particularly on public-facing or public-way adjacent frontages of the property, that the urban design considerations are important to the planning commission, and may, uh, may slot in just above some of the operational, uh, concerns. Uh, but that we're also highly concerned that it's very visitable, in that people are able to access, uh, the units, there's a visitor parking spot at each unit, uh, which is, is, community development would have no problem with, and I don't think it's mutually exclusive.
Desire as well, right, Greg? Yeah, driveway placed.
There, yeah, I, I, I think there's definite, uh, overlap in that, and perhaps, uh, I mean, there's su- some degree of community development being, you know, us planners being a little less dogmatic, cause we kinda get dysregulated when we look at something like this, and say, does that even have people in it? Because the doors come out to the driveway, and the driveways go to the street, so where do the people go? And we get a little in a bit, you know, in a ruffle, because it doesn't look like it's actually designed for people, but we gotta remember that, you know, not all people are the same. So I, I think there's, yeah, from what I've heard from you, about the, specifically the frontage issue, that it, that's primarily most important along the street, that the interior arrangement is of a secondary, uh, concern, and yeah, I just, uh, I, I don't think there's that much daylight, as, as somebody mentioned, I just wanna just just double-check this.
We'll say, I'm, I'm grateful my daughter has a home, because it's a hard time to get a home right now. But it's interesting, cause it's over in Spanish Fork, and it's a single-family resident, has a yard, all that kinda stuff, and her, her front porch is really tiny, and you come down two stairs, and immediately walk to the driveway, just like this shows. And, like, and, and it looks great.
Yeah.
And like I said, I'm, I'm just grateful she has a home, so I'm not, I'm not griping about that, but it looks great, even though this may or may not have a porch, I can't tell.
Yeah, so.
So I mean, I, I don't really care about, does somebody live there, because the, 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 the walkway to the driveway is so tiny.
Right.
Cause, I mean, that's how hers is, and it looks great, and the whole, you know, two hundred homes in that neighborhood are the same way.
Right, I, I don't have a sidewalk separate from my driveway either.
Are there any other things in the, the language of the proposed codes, that, that you would like to get our view on?
No, cause a lot of it's technical, and it's just really, what Hunter's pointed out, is that I n- I need more than the outside setbacks, and that buildings have to be at least fifteen feet apart, well, how long, if there's gonna be a driveway, how long is that gonna be? Uh, how far does the front of the house have to be set back from the, the drive aisle? Is there a distance between, you know, surface parking in the houses, uh, all those kinda things to actually flesh out, especially where this is gonna stand on its own. I think if we actually did a code analysis here against a proposed development, I think we'd run into a lot of issues with what the neighborhood commercial zone tells us to do, in regards to things that this overlay is silent about, and then we would default to the neighborhood commercial zone. I think there's some technicalities and some finesse in the drafting there, that, that need additional work. And that's not necessarily something I need policy guidance on, because I don't think most of, I don't think there's a lot, I don't think there are big policy questions, just uh, more technical questions in the code.
Any other comments or questions? Not, we have a motion?
I, I move to continue the consideration for the amendment to Springville City Code Title XI, Chapter Five Overlay District Regulations Adding Senior Housing Overlay Zone.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thanks, thanks for all your work, and Josh and Carla, I know you guys put a lot of hours into this, and along with your other responsibilities. So thank you also. Alright, get back to the agenda here. Okay, we'll move on to the next presentation, Josh, that's you. Unless you guys want us to continue to talk for another hour or two, before you're.
Please no.
I, I think it may be some kind of karmic retribution for the, uh, people that sat through our previous discussion about, like, aside for their five-minute items.
They had to be in second this time.
Right. Y'all know what we're doing here. We, you have the staff report, we had way more discussion on this than I, uh, planned last time, and I was, as I represented to Ed, probably, uh, more dogmatic about much of it than I needed to be, cause there really wasn't, there really was just a couple finite issues, and, uh, tonight, we'll just focus on that. We have come to a point where we believe we have a mutually acceptable solution, and staff's making a positive recommendation. There are, there, as noted in your staff report, there is one element that UBA proposed, that, that, that the city, that we don't want, and that's, uh, the, basically, they are proffering to say, we will make this concept plan regulatory or binding, and we don't want that, we just want to have the code to tell us how things work, and whatever you do, as long as it meets the code, it's fine, because if we make this concept plan binding, and they're a little bit off, then we gotta come back and fix it, and it's a whole pain, and what if they wanna do something different in the next phase, or somebody comes in with a different product type, that they think would work among the list of twenty-six product types?
That could never happen.
Let's just rely on, be comf- I'm comfortable that the code's gonna deliver us a good result, I don't need, nor do I wanna codify their concept. Uh, so that is the one instance where they made a proposal, and we, we would counter that we don't wanna do that, and I don't think that. I wouldn't think that Ed would have any issue with that, but we'll let him speak to that. Uh, so the, the provisions that we overlap on are that the southern part must include at least ten lot types, except for the residential mixed use, uh, that the minimum amount of studio office, retail, and restaurant and cafe space is approaching forty thousand square feet, uh, which uses essentially the same per-acre requirement as the rest of the plan, and it's just the math that comes out. Uh, no single lot type may exceed any forty percent of total lots, and, uh, unlike lot type fifteen, the compact townhouse, compact townhouse will have a maximum height of two stories or twenty-five feet max, and that lot type twenty-four, the compact urban townhouse, shall have a third floor with a minimum area of five hundred square feet, and what that serves to do is enforce some delineation or segmentation between those two lot types, which could be used to provide the exact same product, and that's something Corquet has pointed out a bunch, that lot type doesn't lock in your product, but it gives you a set of parameters in which you could design an, uh, you could have a compact townhouse that's really little, or a little bigger, and so here, we're just ensuring that these different lot types aren't used to build the same product. I'm gonna grab my water bottle. I don't know if it's an aging thing, but I drink water, and it seems to instantly go to my bladder and not stay in my mouth.
That's cause it's spilling down the front.
Yeah.
When I was little, and we'd drive to the Oregon coast, we used to stop for us, for the kids, and now, when we drive to the Oregon coast, my parents don't mind stopping to charge their Tesla, because we gotta stop for Dad. So, the next one is an additional lot type that Corquet proposed, which I thought was great, what this does is essentially gives uh, opportunity to have a narrower, smaller, flexible lot type, to just slot in places that have fee simple, uh, commercial or, uh, walk-ups over shops, basically your traditional Main Street building, and I said, don't we have a traditional Main Street building? He said, yes, and we went and looked at it, but it's requires a bigger lot, it requires a lot more width, this is basically, you could build the SOS drugstore, or actually, more specifically, like the Brown Art Gallery, or the Old Senior Hotel, or Pier Forty-Nine, with this lot type, which is a lot type we want. Uh, and that's a hole I didn't really realize was there. And this is where we start getting into additional things that staff has asked for, uh, the applicant proffered additional architectural standards and guidelines, and we basically, as you saw in the staff report, wanted to just fill in a couple more of those squares that weren't filled in, to make them shalls instead of shoulds. Uh, I can go to those specifically. We also wanted to add a provision to the, that's in the T-three transect, to the rest of the transect, that, uh, addresses elevation variety, cause in the lar- in the upper transect, uh, the elevation variety a lot, uh, relied more on the anticipated mix between more multifamily attached, or multifamily and single-family attached, uh, lot types, but where we're seeing, there may be a propensity to have more, uh, single-family attached, with less, uh, multifamily lot types, we wanted to make sure that where we have, if we have a big row of townhomes, or a bunch of, uh, twin homes, that those don't all end up looking the same, that it has the same variety that would be experienced in the T-three zone, uh, transect.
So we didn't have that.
We didn't have that, in the T-four and up, we just relied on a minimum number of lot types per block face, and as it always happens, uh, the proposals we've seen in, uh, that, and that have advanced with the, uh, LGI piece, which you brought into the district a couple years ago, and have reviewed the, this, uh, the plat on that, they have met the minimum lot type, cause the lot type says, if you've got a certain amount, you have to have X number of units, so what we're seeing is 28 townhomes and then a cottage on each end. We've got two lot types. I was like, okay, well, if that's gonna happen, I'm gonna need more, I, or I would like to see more guarantee that we're gonna have some variety in elevations if we're gonna have, if that lot type requirement isn't gonna yield as much, uh, balance as we thought it might. So that's really, uh, the, the two provisions we wanted to add. And those really came late as I, uh, as I developed the staff report. So aside from, uh, speaking with Corbett on it today, I haven't had specific conversations with, uh, the applicant about those. I can, I'll just pull those up so you can see the specifics of what we're asking for. This is the language we're asking for in the T5I, that for lot types four through 15, which are primarily the single family attached lots. That the same elevation variation, the same. Wow, typo. It should read the same elevation, oh yeah, no, you're right, the same elevation variation shall not be employed on the adjacent lot on either side of the lot in question, nor on the lot across the street. So we're essentially just copying that from the T3 and putting it in here, but only applying it to lot types four through 15, which is what it was crafted for in the T3. And then if you come down to the, uh, additional architectural standards.
So is Ed agreed to all this stuff that you've?
That, that's actually what I was just saying, is Corbett didn't express any concern with it today, but I haven't heard directly from Ed. And then filling in a couple blanks on the, if I come to the, uh, staff report, you can, we can see the couple blanks we asked to fill in in the architectural standards, which were these, that you shouldn't apply the same color scheme and repeat it side by side. That, uh, you create facade variations by applying different massing articulations, roof orientation, et cetera. And, uh, the block face elevation should be treated as one composition, uh, instead of, uh, so those are the three we're asking them to fill in, and make shalls instead of shoulds. Everything else stays the same in here, and then just adding that little piece to the, uh, architectural standards for the T4 and up. Those are the only provisions that we haven't had mutual, uh, express, uh,
Agreement.
Agreement on. But, though, as, as I was drafting the staff report and kinda just doing one last reflection, those were things that, uh, came as, came up as hopefully low, uh, low stress ways to deal with some of the concerns we've had as we've been moving through the project. And they, they have had the staff report as long as you have, Ed and I haven't had any specific discussion on that. I also wanted to point out, and Corbett caught this, we've had some versionitis as we've been going through this process. And in the staff report, you can see that these blocks are kind of the width they are here, and that you've got a little green space. This is actually the previous version that I had started commenting on, and he sent me a new one on the 26th of December, which I, when I got back to the staff report, I didn't integrate. So I updated that just to show you, uh, cause Corbett was concerned that you'd be able to react to that. So here, this T4 block is just a little narrower to accommodate, um, more the potential for more apartment development here. And the little green, uh, courtyard is taken off this interior block. There still may be concerns over how frontage requirements are being met there. But I communicated to Corbett that I, I felt comfortable recommending to the planning commission that that was a small piece we could finish refining or make sure was correct in the interim between planning commission and, and council. It's just, I don't wanna get something adopted in the regulating plan, that then when we go to try to lay out on the site plan, it actually doesn't work, and have to come back to you again.
So in a situation like that for the recommendation, would we need to mention that in the recommendation?
You could, uh, I, it's not necessary. I'd come to the council and say, hey, we made this little tweak to the plan. Uh, and we talked to the planning commission about it, but if you wanted to communicate that in your motion, that, that definitely helps the planning commission, uh, the city council know that you knew what we were doing. Oh, and they also, Corbett got me a new illustrative plan. But again, the illustrative plan is just eye candy, because it's not regulatory and whatever, as long as it meets the code, you can do it, even if it doesn't look like this. But this just shows, as Corbett says, one exemplary example of how the code could be applied.
So there's a lot of red lines on here, is everybody in agreement with these red lines, is that what I'm?
So the only red lines which haven't been mutually agreed upon are, so first, let me just clarify. Anything that's, that's clouded is, uh, something that's changed or something I've asked to just have a conversation with Corbett about changing, like, when we change part one of the plans, there's so many maps in this document that it perpetuates, has to be propagated through all those maps. And then here I'm essentially saying, hey, we need to, we forgot this page, we need to fix the streets on this map to, uh, to reflect what's in the regulating plan, and do we need to do that little map too? They're really document cleanups, because we've changed this regulating plan, and he's shown me, uh, on these thoroughfare plans, we've updated all the thoroughfare plans to show their new street arrangement. We just need to make sure that we change all the references that need to be updated, essentially. But specifically, uh, and the only red lines that we have not, you know, looked at each other and said we're okay with is this addition of the lot, the elevation variation for lot types four through 15 in all the transects. And the additional, uh, making shalls of these three additional provisions in the architectural design standards that they're proposing to add.
So are you looking to pick all these red lines up before they go to the city council, or?
Well, what, my recommended motion includes filling in these, these boxes and includes adding the, this language to the, uh, block face diversity, so that's included in my language already. All of the other technical things are, yes, things I wanna just make sure we get the document totally cleaned up before we go to the planning commission, cause it's just such a big document.
Or the city council.
Sorry, city council, yes.
So that they have something clean to look at?
Correct.
I think that's a critical.
It will still have red clouds around it, and all the new stuff will be red and underlined, cause that's how we signify what's new. But it won't have all my random comments, like, hey, do we need to fix this, or do we need to fix that? It will be in final adoptable form.
Anything, anything else, Josh? Any other questions?
Now that, that's all I have for you.
Josh, on, um, the one item, the elevation variation. Do you, are you open to potentially allowing, like, no more than two or three?
I am, and I've gone back and forth on this. I did it this way, cause it was simplest to grab some code that was already in there and broaden its applicability. And this is, for everybody, Hunter, this may be more than you wanna know. It's like when my wife asks me a question, like, how do I do this? And I have to give her the philosophical underpinnings of why the neutrals on the left side of the outlet and the positives on the right. And she says, just tell me what to do.
I'm with your wife on that one.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the.
In the Westfields, we require this. I think it unnecessarily creates, uh, it can artificially busy up or, uh, uh, the neighborhood.
Right.
Repetition is not bad, nobody hates cookie cutter cookies if the cookie is good. But if the cookie is bad, we don't want a lot of those cookies. And the reflexive, uh, thing for planners often to do is that so much of what we see presented to us in the market, especially from larger home builders, is not great. So the easiest way for us to force them to do something that's slightly less bad is say,
Don't give me as much.
Don't give me all the same thing, because I know if you have to come up with a couple, one of them may turn out okay. But in Westfield Central, we got rid of that entirely and simply said that when you are employing the same elevation, uh, more than once on a block face, you have to have at least three elements of variation you have to, and those could include change in roof forms, change in window, uh, configuration or design, porch details like the porch roof, the columns, the way the railing's done or color. So if you wanted to come in and paint a different color, put a different material on the bottom of the columns and do a different railing, you can build the same house all along, because nobody looks at the Painted Sisters in San Francisco and goes, could they not come up with a different design? Or brownstones in Brooklyn, except for architectural critics back in the 1800s that were saying, lamenting them as terrible. We don't look at that and say, oh man, I hate that. Or no one goes to Bath, to the, uh, the Crescent in, in Bath and goes, man, that's terrible. Why didn't they mix that up a little more? So yes, I'm definitely open to that. Corbett, in this whole code, has actually pushed it towards more of variety and going, like, there's a Steve Mazan article on how to do townhomes, whether you do a, a single composition or you do repetition of individual units. And Corbett has very much pushed this towards, uh, one composition. So your four unit townhome building doesn't look like four repeated units. And so, in common with how his, he's kind of structured this code, I think this works, but if we're, if there's an interest to tone this down a little bit, I'm, I'm fine with it.
My only, like, concern or just comment there is because we're including such a range from lot four to 15, like, I see that street elevation, and it's extremely busy.
Yeah.
And so I, I would, because there's such a variety of lot types, you're, to discourage any repeats, I mean, you don't go to Yalecrest or up, like, in Salt Lake City and the avenues and see two homes that are the same and throw your head back and say why. Like, and so that's where.
Two houses that are the same in Yalecrest at least.
Well, yeah, not in Yalecrest, bad example. But, um, the, the point being, like, I don't know that it necessarily be, needs to be so strict, uh, because there's such a, you've, you've specified such a wide, wide range of lot type.
Right, the, our concern has been that people aren't using many of them. There's 88 keys on the piano and, or there's 26 lot types.
Know where middle C is.
And people are using like three, they're using the compact cottage, the compact townhome and the compact, uh, twin home. And that, where we, and where we're not getting the diversity and selection of lot types, it's making me think maybe we need to push on the elevations a little bit, because it's more, it's happening more than I thought it would, that we're getting a whole block face of all the same lot type, except the two token ones on the ends that meet the diversity requirement. But it does not, I'm, it is not a positional statement for me that this must be that way, but simply this was my solution to my interest of.
Maintaining what's been happening in the rest of the code.
Yes, of ma, of maintaining the same diversity we see in the T3 transect when the T4 transect ends up looking pretty much like the T3 because of the lot types that are being selected, as we've, we're seeing the market mature in this project move along.
So the short answer is this will allow for that reduction in the verb material will allow, uh, allow, allow for the reduction in repetitive or, uh, variety?
Yeah, this will prevent somebody from using the same, uh, exact elevation next door to each other or across the street from themselves. It could, and it could be, Corbett goes into that, it could be just, you do a shed roof instead of a, I mean, uh, Hunter does this all the time, or you change something, it doesn't mean you have to use it, re-elevate. And he even specifically notes down in, is this the staff report? Down in the new architectural standards that, uh, even though it's part of the facade variation definition, applying different architectural styles to obtain facade variations is not recommended, since it may create clutter and clash between different styles. So don't just, don't give me a, uh, arts and crafts next to a, you know, a Second Empire next to a, uh, you know, mid, you know, a, a cottage revival. It's not best that you do it that way. So.
You ask what those are, I know what those are.
So don't overdo it, but this, and this is an example of where the same floor plan is, is elevated in a number of different ways. Yeah, we do wanna avoid the tendency. We've, in the last 40 years, we've started like trying to create a whole street facade in one house with like, you know, 10 gables and different materials and everything. And we wanna make sure that we communicate that it's okay to have a nice block composition made up of some very simple elements that you could almost build with, you know, building blocks.
Anything else? Alright, thank you. Thanks for all the detail. Sir Axley.
We feel bad for your wife.
For my wife or his wife?
Just teasing him, my wife says the same thing.
Oh yeah. Well, guys, thank you for having me back, and, uh, just for the record, I'm Ed Axley of UBA. And I, I really appreciate all the energy and effort that, you know, Josh and the team have put into this. This presentation is, is actually fairly excellent, I'm very happy with the outcome of it. Interestingly, yeah, we, there was only two parts that we didn't discuss beforehand. I did discuss those with Corbett before I arrived, so I was aware of them. And I'm okay with this too. The only thing, the only thing I would love is if that word shall would imply consideration from staff, meaning like if we showed something that was truly excellent. And it's interesting that he brought up the crescent, cause I was back there and I was literally looking at a picture of the crescent. And, uh, you know, built in 7075, and it's, it's, it's a perfect crescent shape, and it's got exactly the same architecture on the rear side of the property, and it's fabulous, it's considered one of the greatest of all time. The funny thing is the front side, they're all hodgepodge and different all the way around. It's actually terribly ugly on the other side. Nobody ever takes a picture from the other side, which is funny. But yeah, I know, so that, that, that is all, um, we're comfortable with that, that seems very great. I'm really glad that we've gotten to this point, I think it, it meets the intent of what the city was hoping, and I think it gives us what we were hoping to do. You know, other than that, we're just excited to, you know, hopefully get going with this and, and move forward. So, um, any questions for me? No, it's the most developed, um, planning commission, uh, presentation I've ever seen, so job well done, thank you.
It's good to see you guys kinda figure things and work it together. We were hoping for, you know, an opportunity for success, and I think that that may be what we found, so. Guys' hard work, so thanks.
No, I agree, I agree, it's, it, interestingly, from where we, where we left off last time to where we are right now, it's, it's amazing actually where it all came together, but I think it was cause everybody was anxious to find the right solution. And, you know, and it wasn't like, anyway, we were anxious to work together, we just had to get there, so. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll open it up, we'll open a public hearing.
Not seeing anyone approaching the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for this piece.
Recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Lakeside Landing Special Overlay District as contained in Exhibits 1 and 2 in this report.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Alright, the ayes have it.
Good luck, guys.
On to the council.
Yeah, anything else that needs to be discussed tonight, any other comments, questions?
There is a, are we not doing Agenda Item 3? There's one, there's two pages that are right at the end.
What?
I don't have them.
Last two pages?
Yeah, I have, I think it's part of Agenda Item 2.
Oh, I was just like, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we didn't approve that, Hunter.
I was like, is this like a birthday surprise?
Nope, let's just approve it without consent. Alright, uh.
I move to close the meeting.
Second?
Or adjourn.
All in favor?